Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, invited guests, city staff, my colleagues on council, city manager Stephen Carter, city attorney Lavonda Graham-Williams, and Madam Clerk, Ms. Deborah White and Deputy Clerk, Ms. Anita Sherrod. I want to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. And if I could ask us all to please stand for a moment of silence. Afterwards, the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will now ask my colleagues to be... Please note your attendance electronically.
Seven members of City Council are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have the minutes of a call meeting, May 28, 2024, and a regular meeting, May 28, 2024. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Move of adoption?
Second.
Would you please vote electronically?
The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I would like to take a moment to recognize our Chief Judge of the Circuit Court, Judge Johnny Morrison. Thank you, sir. And his wife, our Clerk of the Courts, Ms. Cynthia Morrison. Ma'am? Thank you all for joining us this evening. Madam Clerk, would you please read the Speaker's statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first... Our next item on the agenda is public hearing, item 24-165. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Yes, sir. Public hearing with respect to the proposed adoption by the City Council of an ordinance increasing the annual salary of the mayor to $47,000 and of each Council... City Council member to $43,000 effective July 1, 2025, as authorized by Chapter 608 of the Virginia Acts of Assembly 2024, Section 1.
Thank you, ma'am. And before we open up the public hearing, this is a public hearing item, and you are not required to have signed up to come speak to this particular item. If you decide to come up and speak on this item, you will need to state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Before we call the first speaker up, I would like to just provide some background support for this statute. First of all, this was not something that was created or put together by the Portsmouth City Council. During the 2024 legislative session, the General Assembly amended Section 15.2-14.6 of the Virginia Code, which establishes salary limits for mayors and members of City Council. Prior law provided that maximum salaries would not exceed $25,000 for mayors and $23,000 for council members. Now you all know how much we make. For cities with populations between 75,000 and 174,000, these maximum salaries had not been amended since 1996, a period of almost 30 years. So I just wanted to provide that as a backdrop because I know that the public hearing notice didn't include that. So the floor is open at this time. This is a public hearing. If you wish to come speak on this public hearing item...
We have three speakers.
Yes, and we do have speakers, yes. You will not be required to have signed up, but we do have some registered speakers who have signed up, and we will take those registered speakers first. The first registered speaker is Steve Carroll. Mr. Carroll, please come forward, state your name and address, sir.
Evening, Mayor, staff, other members of council. Name is Steve Carroll. I reside in Portsmouth, Virginia. Council rules of conduct on... Council rules of conduct prohibit me from addressing individuals, so I will address you as a body. And regrettably, a number of people on the dais do not adhere to those speaker rules. But I'm going to make the case why I'm opposed to this. One individual on the dais, from what I hear, being retired, does put in a lot of hours, and they are likely worthy of a significant raise. As for the rest, that's where I have a rub. About two years ago, a council member accused a fellow member of the most serious infraction they could raise, the insinuation of corruption. Along with that charge came an unhinged display devoid of statesmanship and respectability and laced with the most vile language I have ever heard from an elected official in all my life. Given that outburst, and if the accusations are unfounded, was that member of council sanctioned and fined? Because I have seen other members of council fined for less serious infractions. It is your duty to police yourselves to ensure that council conducts itself with dignity and demeanor that represents the city of Portsmouth as a respectable city. About eight weeks ago, a speaker came to this podium, and immediately their talking points went off topic. The chair correctly and respectfully told the speaker no less than three times their comments were off topic and not appropriate for the agenda item. But in this instance, from left of center of the dais comes a disrespectful interruption, publicly accusing the chair of being rude, which was absolutely not the case. Did that council member go down and coach the speaker on the proper etiquette for speaking at the podium? I've witnessed one current council member vilify a former police chief, the longest-serving one in this city, basically accusing him and his department of being insensitive and abusive. I've done ride-alongs with his department at that time. It is an outright lie. Those officers were professional in every way, and you need to do a ride-along to really understand what an officer is up against. In summation, several members of this current council, in my opinion, by their divisive rhetoric and reckless or incompetent conduct, have brought untold embarrassment on this city. It has cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, in meritless lawsuit settlements. I strongly recommend that you table any discussion of a pay raise until next year, at which time any new members of council that may be elected will be seated, and we can start fresh. I am sensitive to the fact that we haven't had a pay raise for you in almost 30 years. But under the circumstances, I cannot agree to an 88% pay increase. It simply is the bad time with inflation the way it is. We have elderly in this city who are struggling to pay their bills. We can't afford to hire enough police officers. In 30 years, 40 years, 50 years, we have other priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark. Ma'am, if you would come forward. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor. You can come up, ma'am.
The city attorney is not in. I was just going to ask, when would the... Just for a point of information, when would the raise start if we were to vote for it?
Well, the legislation states that the raise would not take place or be effective until July 1, 2025.
So this council wouldn't benefit from it at all?
Unless you were reelected. If your election is up this November and you were not reelected, you would not benefit from that, sir. That is correct.
Thank you.
Good evening. You know me as Joanne Clark, resident of Churchland. I have a new name, Council Watcher of Churchland. I've been watching you all for nearly nine years. There's been several administrations since then, and based on this information the General Assembly has presented and that you have on the agenda, it makes sense. Now, unfortunately, like so many other things, when I went to the city assessor about why my lot was only $58,000 for every year value for 10 years, and then all of a sudden, boom, it tripled, the excuse was, well, we're catching up. So I guess these amounts are catch-up amounts. They're really not large amounts of money. And for a really dedicated council person, whether it be a man or a woman, full-time or part-time job, whatever way you consider it, or however much time you invest in it, it's fair pay. And for some, it's not enough. But I want to rebate. I don't think you all have been giving us everything that we really are due. I think that some of the disrespect for the seat that you hold and the manner in which you respond to the citizens, the fact that sometimes you don't respond to the citizens, we feel disrespected too. Now, I know it's not an easy job. I was an elected official a few years back in a different city, but I was not dealing with the same situations that you are. I was dealing with soil and water issues and how to hand out to farmers federal money for being good stewards of the land. Your job is to be responsible for the stewards of our revenue. And it's sad to say, a lot of us are unhappy about that. You all know what you have demonstrated over the past six and seven years at these seats. And I think you all also realize the mistakes you were made, particularly with the handling of department heads and city managers. That hurt everybody when that happened. I pray that we don't fall back into those same routines. If you have somebody here that's a department head or staff, never discuss them in public about their service to the city or their duties. Either mentor them, train them, or reassign them. If you have a city manager that doesn't do everything that you have expectations for, you don't humiliate them in public and then have lawsuits on your hands. There are ways to deal with people, and we all should be given respect to one another. There again, I say, I want a rebate. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Dr. William Dotson. Sir, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hi, Bill Dotson, Box 3269, 323701. As a business owner and an employer, I've had the opportunity to evaluate many employees. I've seen four of you that have dedicated your lives to this city, and it's so refreshing to see. I see two of you that do the minimum amount that you have to do to keep the job, and I've seen one of you that doesn't even show up to any meetings that they're assigned to of any of the committees. If I were an employer, how would I rate you as an employee? I'd love to have a sliding scale that I could use, but I don't. I look at this raise that you're getting, and I go... And I went home and I adjusted it for inflation. And the inflation value of that money today would actually be a higher raise than what you're being offered now by the state. And I look at it and go, this is a fair amount of money for most of you. I'd love to see how we could discriminate against the rest of you that don't deserve the pay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, and you are not required to have signed up to speak at this public hearing. If you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, but it needs to be germane to the item on the public hearing.
Sherman Tyler, Parker Avenue. I for one agree that y'all should get a raise. You know, we all don't agree on the same things. We all don't move the same way. But y'all do do the work. There's some issues that need to be addressed. But I really don't think we would be having this issue if this dais didn't look like it looked. And I'm just going to say it, you know, that this dais would look any other way, we wouldn't be having this discussion, you know? And I take offense to people coming up here attacking certain people because everybody knows who you're talking about, you know? These people up here to do a job, you know? And know the job is not completed. Know we still got work to do. But these people are working, you know? And I believe that, you know? And I believe that you deserve the raise, you know? Go and give it to them. Give it to every one of y'all, every one of us. If I look at every one of y'all hard enough, I'm going to find something wrong. It is what it is, you know? Nobody dots every i and nobody crosses every t and no kind of expect in life, you know? But the people chose who they wanted on that dais. And because the people have chosen and have spoke, you pay them. Don't get to pick and choose who you want to pay and don't want to pay. They all doing a job. The people have spoke. The people wanted everyone up there, and then the people put them there for a reason. So you don't get to get up there and pout because you heard something or whatever, you know? You pay these people they worth, you know? And every one of y'all, you know, every one of y'all, I wish you the best, you know? I wish you would come together a little more and let's handle a common solution, or let's handle a common problem and get a common solution for it. And we can do it as one, together. But I don't think not paying you or punishing you for something you did last year or a year before is the answer. Pay these people what they worth, you know? And if you don't like who up there, you got the power of the vote. Remove them. That's it. But you don't get to pick and choose who get paid. This one should get paid back, but this one don't work. That's nonsense. That's nonsense, and it's disrespectful. Because that's one body. You can't... Ms. Lisa can get paid something, and you don't get it because it's a body. Everybody got to get paid. So you vote for one to get paid. Everybody got to get paid because we work as a body. And until we get to the end of our mind, our city going to keep being divided. Because you get up here making comments to showing that you're not with the city of Portsmouth. Because we are one right here. And everybody got to feel that raise increase, not who you want to feel it because who you like. I think everybody up here work. I've called almost every one of them, and they all work. So how you get to choose who get paid and don't get paid? Pay the people. Give them the raise. They haven't got a raise since 1980 or something? And we discussing that? 30 years, and we discussing these peoples about a raise? 30 years they having gallery raise, and we actually discussing should or they should not get one? Come on, y'all. We not working as a city. We got to work as a city to get this thing under control. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come and speak, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Sheila Joseph, 139 Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23702. I would like to say that the people that get the raise that will be in the seat at that time, I just pray that it be a unified body, you know, at that time, and really earn it. And when you tell people that you're going to schedule appointment with them, keep it. Make them feel like you earning your position. In other words, I do not see enough people contacting me, and I'm just using for an example. It makes me lose confidence in those that give me their word. Ms. Joseph, I'm going to get what you... And never do. But I will say, if you look back there on the wall, nobody can say that many people been on there didn't get what they deserve, and I think that you do too. Thank you.
Thank you. When you come forward, if you state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Sergio. I reside at 1420 Am Avenue here in the city of Portsmouth. You know, as an experienced manager, I was looking at this, you know, raise proposal. And, you know, I'm for one, I will tell you straight up, I'm not for meritorious raises. I'm more of a pay-for-performance type person. However, of course, this vote would not allow that because if it did, quite naturally, certain council members would get a raise and certain council members would not. I mean, if it was left up to the people, and I'm quite sure every person in this audience could see that happening. But let's be clear, here's a compromise I would like to propose, and maybe this needs to come by way of the city charter. And maybe it could be discussed with the city attorney to see how they could be working it. But if this raise is approved, then it needs to be made easier to recall council members for dereliction of duty or whatever the cause may be if it's raised by the citizen body. And I really feel like that that's a fair compromise because, you know, of course, you know, I get it, you know? Serving in an elected position, it is a job, you know? But let's be clear, we're not raising... We're not trying to employ career politicians because from what I've seen, career politicians get complacent and get comfortable, especially when they know how to make their living just by being a career politician and not holding a full-time job. Now, see, I hold a full-time job, so I can't be a career politician. I refuse to be one. But I can serve in my own capacity as a citizen, you know, and allow the time I do have. So because I really feel like that we have to be careful when we're discussing raises, especially for elected positions, because if the performance is not there... And it really pains me that we can't really make this an individual thing. I'm being so serious. It really pains me. Because like some speakers have said, some do deserve it and some don't. It's just what it really... The rubber meets the road. And it's not a black or white thing for what some contrary to popular belief. This is an accountability thing. And what happens is people try to lack on accountability when they look when the people that we're talking about look like us. And I think that's a very dangerous concept. We have to get off of that boat because we dug that hole long enough, and it's gotten us absolutely nowhere. So we going to be fair about it, you know? Everybody has to be held to the same level of accountability. Everybody has to be held to the same standard. And I would think that in reality terms, that people that look like us, look like me, should be looked at with a greater scrutiny because of what we fought so hard to encompass to grow where we are today as a people. So again, yes, you know, but it's not a black or white thing. This is a city council issue. So if you all decide to vote for that raise, just know that there are going to be people like me that really are going to look at this level of accountability and really work even harder to make sure that that $43,000 or whatever that your position encompasses is worth what you're getting paid. Otherwise, you can guarantee yourself you're out of there, whether it be during election time or whether it be during recall. Because we are tired and fed up with people that are supposed to be serving all and have the thought and the mad process to want to serve some, but then want to come and cry about some money. Do your job. Because I can guarantee you right now, as a manager, people that don't do their job for me, guess what they get? F.I.R.E.D., fired immediately. I have a zero tolerance policy. Anybody that has ever known that has ever served under me knows what time it is for me. I cut no corners. I own my work. I came right here and right out of my work clothes just to be down here for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Shanina Francis. I live in the Green Acres section of Portsmouth. So I'm not denying that you need a raise, but my problem comes into the amount of the raise that you're giving yourselves. You're asking for $43,000 and $47,000 when most of your citizens make about 30. They make less than that. My other problem is it's kind of odd that we have money to give you these raises when we didn't have money to not increase utilities by 5%. So when you're thinking about yourselves and asking for this raise, I want you to think about the people and our taxes. Thank you.
You're welcome. You state your name and address, ma'am. You will have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Pamela Wilkins. I live in the Westbury community. Good evening, council members, mayor, staff. I would just like to say, I'm in agreement with them getting a raise. I'm a social worker by trade, and all of you are social workers as well because you deal with all the complaints, all the criticism, everything that's going on in the entire city. And you all sit there and you all listen. You don't have judgmental faces. You don't frown. You just listen to the people. Of course, you can't do everything. We have to be responsible as well as citizens of Portsmouth. So we can't just look at you all and think you all going to solve the entire, all the problems that come up in the community. You can't do that. But you do need a raise. We all need a raise. We work. Some of us, we don't work a full eight hours a day on our jobs, but we still get a raise. So we can't expect, just because you all going to get a raise, that you all got to just work miracles. So I'm in agreement with you all getting a raise, and I trust that you all going to do, continue doing the job you're doing, and even do even more. Now, all of you have a passion for something. Some have a passion for the teens, the adults, the seniors, or whatever your passion is. That's what you're utilizing. So for someone to get up here to say one is doing more work than the other, that's not necessarily true. Maybe that person's passion is in a particular area, and they giving themselves more to that, but that don't mean that they're not doing their job. So I'm in agreement with it, and you all keep doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Jay Massey. I'm at 4935 Briarwood Lane. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So right now, I don't agree with giving the raise. I would say pass it off to fiscal year '26. I watched the May 14 council meeting where it looked at raising real estate taxes, raising the water prices. With these raises and the increase of the income to give you guys the raises, I wasn't seeing it in the budget for this year. So at this time, I think we need to do better. I mean, you guys each have your jobs. We have our jobs. I mean, just mine alone. I work for the shipyard. They don't pay taxes. But we still pay taxes as local citizens. I know my mortgage went up $200 a month starting in January this year. That's because they said my appraisal went up. Great. My new appraisal went up again. Great. Property going up, but it's pricing me out of the house that I bought two years ago. So for this is why I would disagree with the raises at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. If you would come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I am Mark Godulagiatrowski, PO Box 50141, Portsmouth, Virginia. The General Assembly is not your friend. They threw this in your lap, and if you vote for it... They threw this in your lap, and if you vote for it, you may be excoriated and defamed, and, and suffer other types of retribution like getting unelected. Because people don't understand what the mayor said in his opening remarks, that this is something, these salaries have been frozen for almost thirty years. Because we are in a Dillon Rule state, locality does not have the ability to raise the salaries. It's the General Assembly that had that authority. All of a sudden, in 2024, they got religion and decided, well, we need to catch up. So, the mayor is getting a twenty-two thousand dollar bump under this legislation. Council members, a twenty thousand dollar bump. The rational way to have done this from the beginning was to peg council raises to the wage increases for general wage employees in the city of Portsmouth. Then it goes year over year, just like the people who come in here every day and do the jobs to keep the lights on in the city. But nobody, nobody thought of doing that, or nobody decided to do that, if they did think of it. So, now it's all on your shoulders. You can decline it, and then you're back to the square that you were in before this passed. The General Assembly could have said, there will be a referendum held in which the people can say whether or not to give you the raise. There, there are a lot of different ways that this could have been done more rationally. So, what I would suggest that you do, there was a very reasonable comment that came into Monday's Portsmouth Coffee Talk show from a former city council member. And her suggestion was that you raise your salaries over four years. Five thousand dollars in the case of city council members, so it's not just one big pop. And in your legislative request to the General Assembly this year, you asked them to establish what I talked about earlier. You would receive raises pegged to the raises received by general wage employees in your municipalities, so you don't get back into this situation thirty years later. Well, you won't be in it. Most of us won't be here thirty years from now, but somebody will be. Let's rationalize this thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. One more call. This is a public hearing. If you want to come and speak on this public hearing item, please come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. Todd Taylor, three eighteen North Street, two-three-seven oh four. Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff, I'm in agreement with some sort of raise. We all have cost of living increases, as I'm sure you all do. And again, with the prior speaker, I think it ought to be a staged-in situation, where we take the opportunity to lead by example, and show the citizens of the city of Portsmouth, as well as the other employees of the city of Portsmouth, that we're not going whole hog and taking it all in one fell swoop, that we're gonna stage it in. You wouldn't give all the city employees a hundred percent pay increase, even though it was calculated to be eighty-eight percent. I just think this would be a great opportunity to show that you're here to work for the city of Portsmouth, and the citizens of Portsmouth, and stagger that pay increase in over a four-year, five-year period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address, sir, and you will have five minutes.
Thank you. Tracy Borman, five thirty-two North Street. Thank you, council members, city employees. I'm in agreeance with the last two speakers. So, I have an MBA, and I would not, in good conscience, give any employee an eighty-eight percent pay raise just overnight. I'm not sure what the state legislation has granted. I know that's the maximum wage that y'all are entitled to. I don't know why we're jumping from where we're at to the maximum wage immediately. I have looked at the minutes for many of the council meetings, and I know that there's several council members put on committee, committees, that don't even attend those committees. So, you're asking us to give you an eighty-eight percent pay raise, and you're not doing a hundred percent of the job. And I'm not saying every one of you. I know there's many of you. I'm also curious to know why the mayor's pay is not separated from the council's pay, because there's a differentiation in what y'all do. The mayor is responsible to handle natural disasters, not the council members. The mayor is responsible for handling other situations that arise, that necessarily the council members don't even show up for. So, I, I think that you guys need to reevaluate how you're doing this, and maybe put it to referendum, and let the citizens of Portsmouth determine your fate, not just the bias committee saying, hey, we're gonna vote for a pay raise ourselves, regardless of what the, the community states. I think this should go to referendum. Thank you.
If you would state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Pamela Anstead, nineteen nineteen Atlanta Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia. I would agree that all of y'all do deserve a pay raise. I didn't know you was making McDonald's money. And you do deserve more than what you're getting. But I can guarantee you this, if you raise those salaries to forty-three thousand dollars in the next, what, year, I'm gonna start campaigning in November.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come and speak on this public hearing item, you can come forward. You will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed. We will vote on this public hearing item under items submitted by council. So, we will move to the next item of unfinished business, item twenty-four dash seven six C.A.P. dash twenty-four dash zero one. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we're considering for this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution adopting the City of Portsmouth Innovation District Plan.
Thank you, ma'am. And we, we do have a request for the floor from our city manager, Mr. Carter. Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, mayor. I watched the video of the March twenty-sixth meeting when this came up previously, and there were some issues that came about that still needs to be addressed. I'm requesting the deferral of this, of the adoption of the Portsmouth Innovation District Plan. We have not yet completed the necessary details to implement a small and disadvantaged business enterprise program citywide. Our team is currently finalizing the policy to determine the program, to define the program and its intended outcomes. We're modifying the purchasing policy and our purchasing documents to incorporate the thirteen recommendations from the most recent disparity study. We've already advertised and are scheduling interviews for a DBE coordinator. I'd like to have all of those things in place before we bring this back again, so I can actually present that to you before we do anything else. Because it, what I'm trying to present to you will be a, a full citywide program that would encompass everything that we do from this point forward, not just this particular item. So, I'm asking if it, if you will indulge me to allow this to be deferred one more time to August thirteenth. And I will ensure that I have all those details that I just talked to you about in place and ready to present to you prior to bringing this back to you again. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Just wanted to put a motion on the floor that I move to defer this Innovation District item to the August thirteenth meeting at the request of the city manager.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Is any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, I would ask my colleagues to v, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted for deferral until August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
And Madam Clerk, just for clarity's sake, we did have some registered speakers for this item, and the fact that it is deferred, we will not have any registered speakers for this item.
Correct.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, council.
If we could proceed to the next item, city managers' report, item twenty-four dash one six six. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting with appreciation a bequest in the amount of two hundred six thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-two cents from the estate of Madavi Shikari, Shari, excuse me, and appropriating said funds to the FY twenty twenty-five general fund budget for use by the Police Department and Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a registered speaker for this item. Here's Mr. Mark Godoldi-Giatrofsky. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Mayor, council, and other neighbors. This is the second such item in the last two years to come before the council. This bequest of two hundred six thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-two cents from the estate of Madavi Shari is designated for the use of the Police Department and the Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services Department. And I find it very moving. In twenty-eight years of living in Portsmouth and participating as a citizen in city council meetings, I have never seen anything on this scale. As a citizen of Portsmouth, I want to thank the donor. If my words can reach her in whatever plane of existence she is, she is residing now. It's an act of great generosity. The departments in question serve the citizens of this city every day. And so, she has not only made a bequest to our first responders, but a bequest to her fellow citizens. And I am almost speechless in terms of the, this act of generosity. And I hope that we will all work to find some way to express our generosity, our gratitude for these gifts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I think it is a reminder that there are still beautiful people in the world. I understand this is the second gift that this individual has bequeathed to the city, so we are absolutely grateful for that. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, item twenty-four dash one six seven. And Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a marketing leverage tourism grant, a destination marketing organization grant, a marketing leverage Virginia two fifty grant, and social media cooperative marketing funding in the total amount of sixty-three thousand eight hundred fifty dollars from the Virginia Tourism Corporation, and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty twenty-four Grants Fund for use by the Department of Museums and Tourism to attract visitors to Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Is any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Next item, twenty-four dash one six eight. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, an ordinance accepting an allocation of sixty-five thousand thirty-two dollars from the State Compensation Board Technology Trust Fund, and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty twenty-four Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Circuit Court Clerk's Office to fund technology, maintenance, and improvements.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Is any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
We have now come to the item of new business on our agenda, item twenty-four dash one six nine, boards and commissions. And Madam Vice Mayor, do we have any boards and commissions this evening?
Mayor, there don't, there are no boards and commissions to appoint today.
Thank you, ma'am. We've now come to item twenty-four dash one seven zero, items submitted by council members. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering under this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance establishing annual salaries of forty-seven thousand dollars for the position of mayor, and forty-three thousand dollars for the position of city council member effective July one, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Move for approval. Is that it? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, we heard a bunch of comments during a public hearing tonight. Those comments echoed the comments that I've heard at Civic League meetings, the comments I've received in email, and the comments that I've received over the phone from, from our neighbors. As a result of those comments that I've been receiving, I've been thinking about how to address the concerns that have been brought to us by our neighbors around the pay raise. The first question I got was, can we, can we do this by referendum? And so, I asked the city attorney that question. The language from the General Assembly, as was pointed out, since we're a Dillon Rule state, we, we must comply with the, the General Assembly language that precludes using referendum as a path to get where we're going. So, it has to be done by city council by ordinance. That's why we're here talking about it tonight. I heard, can we take several bites of this apple instead of one great big bite going from where we are now directly to the new cap? So, cap is an important word. The General Assembly language does cap the mayor pay at a new number, and the, at forty-seven thousand, and the city council pay cap at forty-three thousand. And so, because that's the word, or that's the language, I asked the city attorney, is it possible that we could incrementally work our way to the cap? And to that question from her back to me was, yes, we could. And so, as we've heard tonight, that's a, an option available to us. And so, in an email earlier today to my colleagues on city council, I suggested that we at least consider our discussion tonight, amending the ordinance on this first bite of the apple to push our mayoral salary to thirty-seven thousand, and city council pay to thirty-three thousand, which basically takes us halfway from where we are now to the new cap. And then, the, the other thing that's kind of wrapped into the General Assembly language is the timing to do all of this. So, the General Assembly language links the pay raise process to election cycles. So, the, all of the So all of the timing for proposing and approving and advertising and hearings and whatnot are tied to election cycles. And so because we're in an election cycle now, for the mayor and three of us, we discussed bringing this to a vote now because we're in the window to do something about it now before the mayor and half of the city council gets a referendum when it comes time in November to decide who's going to be sitting here in January. Now, it only allows a referendum for basically four-sevenths of the city council. So Hugel and Moody and Tillage are not up for consideration for reelection. And so Hugel and Moody and Tillage would be voting for a pay raise that we would benefit from next summer if we proceed tonight with the vote such as it is. And so again, in the email to my colleagues this afternoon, I suggested and conferred with the city attorney on adjusting the effective date of the pay raise from July of two thousand twenty-five to July of two thousand twenty-seven, which would give everybody in the city the opportunity at the voting booth to decide on all seven of us. So we vote tonight, make the decision, and make the pay raise effective in July of two thousand twenty-seven. Nobody up here benefits unless we get reelected. So I proposed those two options to my colleagues, and I did that as a way of stimulating conversation tonight, but primarily in response to the comments that I've heard from you all from a variety of sources. And so I offer those two options, those two potential amendments to the ordinance. One, that we limit the pay raise to thirty-seven thousand for the mayor, thirty-three thousand for city council during this vote. And secondly, that we consider pushing the effective date of the pay raise to July of two thousand twenty-seven rather than next July. And with that, I'll give you the floor back, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, as many of you know, I've served in elected positions since two thousand and two. Served on the school board for twelve years. Over that twelve-year period, we had two pay raises that we had to vote on as council members. I saw no consternation from the citizens on each of those occasions. And so I think that the process that has been used in the city on the school board side is the same citizens. And I have not seen any fallout over those raises. Our salaries on the school board, I think, was doubled. The last one, I was not on the school board at that time. I think it doubled again. And I didn't see any major repercussions from the citizens, nor did I see the school district change. It follows that same schedule with the election cycles because it holds those of us who vote on it and are up for election, it holds us accountable. So I would ask my colleagues to adopt this as is. It has already been used in the city, and we haven't had any issues with it from the citizens at large.
Thank you, sir. We do have a couple of registered speakers for this item. Our first registered speaker is Mr. Steve Carroll. If you would come and speak to this item, you will have five minutes, sir.
My name is still Steve Carroll, and I still am a resident of Portsmouth. I haven't been up here in seven months. Let me just coin a little, maybe overused phrase, "everything in moderation." I think, again, so I don't mention names, I think the proposal from left of center of the dais is an excellent example of that. Again, thirty, almost thirty years is a long time. And I am not insensitive to that fact. But I am also very sensitive to the optics of it. And not that I'm driven by optics, I'm more driven by principle. And if I haven't made that clear already, then I've not done what I came to do the first time I spoke. But I want to clarify my summation. That's a big chunk at one time. And there are people in this city who are not happy. Some of them are just chronic complainers, and some of them have much to be justified in not being happy. I want you to look behind me tonight. I can remember seventeen years ago when this room was filled full of involved, concerned citizens. I can remember one in particular. Some of y'all never even heard of it, one of you have. Z one oh seven, Z oh seven oh one. It was a zoning ordinance. A developer was trying to pull a fast one. And this room was packed, standing room only. Where people in this city from different civic leagues pulled together. And we can bring that back to the city, but only if there's unity in the city and unity on this dais. And I'm not saying get along just for the sake of getting along. I want people to disagree because that's how we move things forward. But there are people unhappy with some of the things we have seen. And in summarizing my previous points, some of the conduct, some of the actions of certain members of this council has cost this city dearly in reputation and cost us dearly in money. And money that we desperately need right now to hire police, to hire fire, to pay those people what they deserve as well. We're not happy. We are not happy. And it's not an implication that we pay this one this much and this one this much. That's irrelevant. That's not the point that I was trying to make. I heard some excellent comments here tonight. Everything in moderation. I think the point made by the councilman of deferring and giving an immediate bump is a perfect example of that. And I would suggest, I strongly implore you, to take advantage of that before you vote. I hope you haven't already made up your mind. I hope not. I hope you think very carefully about what you are about to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Todd Taylor.
Todd Taylor, three eighteen North Street, Portsmouth, two-three-seven oh four. Mr. Mayor and City Counsel, Councilman Hugel, I applaud your opportunity to try and pull the group together ahead of time and come up with a good compromise. I think it was a great suggestion, something that should be considered. That's going to look good for the council itself and for the city of Portsmouth, for its citizens. And it shows that we're becoming more unified and looking towards the future and trying to make this a brighter and better place for people to want to come and live and enjoy life. Councilman Whitaker, I'm not sure when those two were approved with the city, the school board, date-wise, but I would assume that was sometime prior to all of the packages that were paid out to these employees that were hired for periods of time that then were fired and collected a severance package. So that's something that should be considered as well. Thank you.
Tracy Borman. Sir, if you state your name and address, you have five minutes.
I'm Tracy Borman, again, five thirty-two North Street. Councilman Hugel, again, brilliant representation of how to move forward with some of this as far as the pay raises are concerned. I think your plan satisfies what the people of Portsmouth is looking for. I don't, again, I want to reiterate, I don't ever give pay raises at the company I work for as a group of people. Normally, it's merit-based, it's how you do your job, et cetera, et cetera. But I also am sympathetic to the fact that your wages presently are unacceptable. And if we, the people, expect you to perform to a standard, then you need to be paid for that standard. I simply agree with that. There was a mention that the school district had taken pay raises without dispute, but there was also promises made by the school board to increase the education, to increase everything else. And those promises, to my knowledge, have yet to be kept. I believe Portsmouth schools were ranked at the lowest in the state of Virginia, based on my research. So I don't know if just because the public didn't disagree with those raises justifies whether, you know, you should just arbitrarily give yourself a pay raise. I think merit needs to be assessed here. If you feel in your heart of hearts that you are doing the best job for the salary that you're making, you know, move forward with giving yourselves a pay raise. But the citizens obviously don't feel that you're doing the best that you can for the wages that you're currently making. So therefore, a staggered approach is probably the best bet. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. We already have a motion and a second. Councilman Hugel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I move to amend the ordinance. Line one, from mayoral pay of forty-seven thousand per year to thirty-seven thousand. Line two, to amend city council pay from forty-three thousand to thirty-three thousand per year.
Okay. We have a competing motion on the table to change from what the original ordinance was. And so we need to take that matter up first, or we take the first matter up? Go ahead.
I'll defer to the city attorney.
Go ahead. Go ahead, ma'am. You have the floor.
So first, thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Vice Mayor, members of council. First, we need a second for the amended motion.
Correct.
Once you receive a second on that amended motion, then you would take up the vote on the amended motion first.
And then we go back to the original motion.
If necessary, yes, sir.
So we do need a second on the amended motion? Do we have a second? It fails? So then we go back to the original motion? We have a speaker for the discussion. So Mr. Barnes, you signed up for it. You have the floor, sir.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate all the comments that we heard. I just wanted to kind of correct something as it pertains to our school system. Because I think when we put certain information out there, we deter people from wanting to come to the city and people that we need to come to the city to help with the taxes that we say are too high or the real estate and all of that. Our school system is nowhere near the worst. We have a really good school system. As a proud parent of children who attend Portsmouth Public Schools, I am very happy of the education that they're getting, and I'm very happy of the education that I got from Portsmouth Public Schools. Not only that, I was on that school board that raised the five thousand to ten thousand. But we also raised our R N pays because they were lowest in the district. We raised them to one of the highest in the district. And we did that without going in moderation. We did that because they needed it, and we needed to have R Ns for our school system because the way it was set up, you had R Ns and nurses taking care of a couple of schools. So in order to compete and get those positions, we had to make sure that we raised their pay drastically instead of doing it implements. So, but I just wanted to say that because I hear people talk about our school system, and then I hear people complain about the taxes and complain about programming and things of that nature. When we do those type of things, we discourage people from coming to the city of Portsmouth. And we need those people in the city of Portsmouth. We need people to come here, we need them to live here, we need them to go to our schools and all those things. So, and the information is just not true. Our schools are not nowhere near the worst. We're in the top three when it comes to our school system. And our school system, and that's contributed to the last couple of years. And even before then, they were working with money that they weren't getting, but they've been fully funded the last four years. And they've done some tremendous things when it comes to the electronics, when it comes to making sure that our kids are having all of the things that they need as far as teachers and raises and things of that nature. Don't get me wrong, we still need teachers, but that's a thing across the country that people are not choosing the profession, just like they're not choosing it when it comes to public safety. So please, please stop pushing that narrative that our school system is the worst or anywhere near the worst. We are not anywhere near the worst at all. We have a great school system. Our kids are excelling, they are passing, they are moving forward, they're going on to great things. I am a happy parent, a proud parent of children that go to Portsmouth Public Schools, and I wouldn't take them anywhere else.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to reserve my comments like many of my colleagues here, but when I get that churning inside my spirit, then I know I have to speak up and make a comment on it. Listen to all of the speakers tonight, and everyone on this council knows the work that we do. We know it's not just the second Tuesday. We know it's just not the fourth Tuesday because we go to many other meetings outside of that time. We get calls all night, all week. And if I could point to a couple in the room, my salary would be worth it for just that person. But I do believe that this council deserves the increase. It has been thirty years since this council has received an increase. And I've often thought in my mind that this council should at least get a two or three percent increase when city officials or city staff got an increase because that would be fair. But we never did, and we never complained. We continued to do the work that we were elected to do. And when you really count up the pay, twenty-three thousand dollars after they take out the taxes and we go through the tolls for the many events that we have to attend, and when we pay for some of the events that we have to pay to the go-to, and once we pay for some of the ads that we contribute to some of the events that we go to for some of the events, that money is always a gift, almost always given it back to our city. And we have done that without complaining. And the members on this council, some people said that this is going to be a political thing because four of us are running for reelection or some of us are running for mayor seat. And they say that it's going to be too controversial, just vote no because then the people will see that you, you know, you were on their side. But I'm on the side of the city, and I'm on the side of always what is right. And I think that this council deserves the increase, whether it be incremental, all-in-one lump sum, or however it gets there, it's going to get there. I had thought about in my mind maybe a five-five-five, five thousand each year so that it would be separated over the time. But the General Assembly is the state body that governs through Dillon Rule what we do as a council. And it would be a slap in their face for us to say, we don't want to take your counsel, we don't want to take your advice. I may have read the statement at the beginning of this meeting stating what it was. And I've talked to members from other councils all across the city, all across the region, all across the state because I'm with the Virginia Municipal League, and I'm with Virginia First Cities. And I've speak with council members from all of those cities. And those citizens and those council members are being unanimous in their votes. And they're voting as a unit, all seven of their body or all nine of their body, to give themselves the increase because they know the work that we put into this. And I hope that we will be a unanimous council as well because it's not going to be for us. Four of us could potentially not even return in January, could be a whole new council. We're voting for future generations. And if you think about some of your children or some of your grandchildren who may want to serve on council in the future, they're not going to come here for twenty-three thousand dollars. So we have to do this for future generations that are coming after us. And this vote will not be effective until July first, so we won't get it at that time anyway. So however this council votes as a body, I would applaud us if we were unanimous in moving forward with what our sister cities are doing all across the Commonwealth, which is to give us the raise that we deserve for the work that we do, day and night, in the grocery store, at the hair salon, in... day and night, in the grocery store, at the hair salon, in the gym, and everywhere else. That don't stop. Our times don't stop. When we had a fire last week, our phones rang, our emails rang, and we had to look at that, and we had to address that. It's not just second and fourth Tuesdays, and it's not just part-time work. This is our passion work, and I think we deserve the increase. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. The vice mayor stated it very well. I'm gonna support this as well. Thirty years, I guarantee you, it's not anybody in the city, or certainly not very many in the city, that have gone thirty years without a salary increase. I know there isn't. The other thing that the vice mayor didn't mention, when we travel around the city, when we go through the tunnels, we don't get reimbursed. I don't think there's a council member up here that requests reimbursement for mileage or for tolls, with the exception of perhaps driving to Richmond or to some, you know, high-mileage destination. So, you know, kicking it down the road another three years, well, in three years, at this economy's inflation rate, you're gonna be further behind the eight ball salary-wise. I do think, and I will support adding to our legislative package a provision in there, and I think it makes good sense to tie councils' increase into what the general wage employees get per year. And I don't know if the state charter would allow that, but I think it's something we need to look into. It's obvious that the General Assembly did look at the inflation rate when they, when they came up with the recommended increase. Because from ninety-six to twenty-three thousand in ninety-six compared today is over what the increase would be. In fact, I think it exceeds forty-five, almost forty-six thousand, according to what the inflationary index has been in that length of time. So I'm gonna vote for it, not ashamed of it. I think everybody up here in the extracurricular stuff that we do and attending meetings and civic functions, we put a lot of hours in. We put a lot, a lot of hours in at home, answering calls, looking over the agenda package. So I think it's, I think it's long overdue, and hopefully, it won't go another thirty years where a council has to be faced with a large amount, which seems like a large amount, but when you index it for inflation again, it's just keeping up, not even keeping up with inflation. So I will vote to support this tonight.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues who've supported this. I think Councilman Moody and Vice Mayor Lucas Burke have made very good comments. A lot of people think we just show up here on second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday of each month, and that's it. That's not how it works, ladies and gentlemen. The work of elected officials is a twenty-four-seven job. I can't take off the title of councilman when I go to Harris Teeter. I can't take the title of councilman off when I go to Walmart. I can't even take it off when I want to go to a family restaurant and have dinner with my family. It's just not one of those types of jobs. In addition, you know, there was comments made about what various members of council contribute to the city. While many of us may not always agree on issues, I cannot take away from any of my colleagues on what they do contribute to the city of Portsmouth. Each of my six other colleagues contribute very well to the city of Portsmouth. Each person has their own passion, each person has the, what makes them tick, just like each and every one of you. The city of Portsmouth is a great city. It is full of people who work hard, who believe in it. And I do believe that each one of my colleagues are just like you, who believe in this city, who work hard for it. When a lot of people come and speak to me, you know, they come with a bunch of complaints. And one of the comments, I say about eight out of ten people tell me, is I could not do what you do, especially for what you all get paid. And some say they wouldn't do it at all for free. But then, when people do get elected, they expect for you to do it for little or for free. And so, with that being said, I do support this, I will vote for it. And in addition to what Vice Mayor Lucas Burke made mention, when we support these organizations, when they have fundraisers or ads, those come out of our personal pockets. That's not something that I go and send an invoice to Ms. White and say, hey, Ms. White, can you pay this? No, that comes out of our personal pockets. And so, all the money that I have given for organizations, whether it's through ads or whether it's through a personal sponsorship, when you see a face that says Councilman Vernon Tillage on it, on a flyer, that's not City of Portsmouth money, that is Vernon Tillage money, just like it's the same for my colleagues. And so I just want to say I support it, and I just hope that the city will continue to support council, continue to support the initiatives that we're trying to do. And really, I do believe we do need to unify our city the best way that we can. And, you know, but that, it's also a two-way street. It's not just council, it's also us as a whole. And so, with that being said, I rest my case. Thank you.
Thank you all. So once again, I want to remind, we have a motion and a second. I would ask everyone to please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any additional pending items for my colleagues on council at this time? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. This question regards our legislative package. Is, is this the time of year that we usually submit items for our legislative package?
Yes, this is actually, I think Mayor, do I have the floor? I'm sorry.
Madam Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is actually a little bit earlier than we usually do, which is the preferred time. I will tell you that we have a legislative group that consists of Councilman Tillage and Vice Mayor Lucas Burke with Sherry Neal and a member from our office. And we just got together to talk about putting a package together. This is an excellent time to put those ideas together, so share them with your colleagues. And at our next meeting, we will begin the work of finding our lobbyists to push those through.
Okay, so we can, we can email our suggestions for the package to you this week, next week?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine there. I think with the change in the leadership and the composition of the General Assembly, that there are a couple of items that I know would have passed and did pass, actually, but for a move by the Republican Party at the last minute in retribution against one of our representatives. And so, I think while we have to tie it in, we had the sponsorship from our senior senator, and also from now at that time, well, presently Speaker of the House Scott. I think we should do that. So I would be forwarding those items to the, to you, city attorney.
That will be fine, thank you, sir.
Okay, all right. And, yeah, I have two other items. The other is that I would ask at our next meeting that the council in public work session, we would ask our city assessor, city attorney to bring us back information regarding discontinuing the open space program. We have seen an abuse of that program by the Elizabeth Manor Golf Course and not paying taxes over twenty years. It was not a mistake. I find it interesting tonight, the speakers who came up and had an issue with the council pay raise, which I believe equates about a hundred and forty thousand. I haven't heard any of you say anything about the millions that have not been paid through open space. I haven't heard a word, haven't heard a word from anyone on that. So, so you criticize the minor and overlook the major. Haven't heard any of you come up here and say anything about that. But yet, you're concerned about the tax dollars and revenue of the city. And I think that the time period that we have been discussing this, that this is something that needs to be addressed, because it was an abuse. And if one party can overlook or not pay for twenty, over twenty years their taxes, then I think that that speaks to, to the fairness that our citizens who struggle to pay their taxes. So I would like, I would like for our council to look at discontinuing this open space agreement program. The second issue deals with the Sugar Hill Task Force. And I think we'll need a consensus, just make sure we get a consensus on that for the next, yeah. The Sugar Hill Task Force, if I understood correctly, the, that task force can be formed either by the mayor or appointing persons, or the council as a whole would serve on that task force.
That, Mayor, may I have the floor?
Madam City Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. That, the memo that I provided to you did mention that it is a mayoral-appointed board. However, this, this council has routinely delegated that service to the Personnel Committee. And so it is not that it has to come directly from the mayor. It would need to come as all other boards through the Personnel Committee. And so that's, that's the only correction to your, yes.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. So we would make that recommendation through the Personnel Committee?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I also, while I have the floor, would like to just make one thing about your, your prior request. As you all know, the Elizabeth Manor Open Space Agreement is the subject of litigation. And so any presentation, which would normally be an open session, a work session, it would have to be enclosed. Also, policies, again, I know because of the interim status of the city manager position has relied heavily on the city attorney's office. We now have a very capable full-time city manager. Policies are done through the city manager's office. So I would suggest that that, that policy evaluation be done with the city manager's cooperation and the city assessor. We would review the appropriateness of the policy once done, but we would not be involved in the development of that policy. So I'd ask your amendment to that.
All right, well taken. All right.
So just so we're clear, is that the city, city manager's office, in conjunction with the assessor, will work on a policy in which we will then go into close to discuss?
Correct.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understood, sir. Our next speaker is Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor. And I think Councilman Tillage, you were the next, right?
Yes.
Okay, because I, I kind of deleted it, but you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things as it pertains to our report back. Last, last meeting I came before council regarding the Churchland Park, asking to get some figures, and we got those figures back as it pertains to the grills, commercial picnic benches, basketball goals, which totals to around fourteen thousand five hundred to eighteen thousand. I would like to, well, I have a question, because I did see that we needed to talk to the school board first. Would we get a consensus on that now and add that with talking to the school board? Or will we wait till we talk to the school board to get this done? Because I know we would need a consensus on this.
Manager Carter, would you want to address that, and then we can proceed? How, how, how do you think is the best way to address that?
No, I was just gonna say consensus would be needed to act by the body, but whatever policy suggestion you have, I defer to that, I suppose.
So would the consensus need to, to be, to do this particular matter, but to add to, but talking to the school board? Okay, so I want to get a consensus to, to do this, it's in the Churchland Park area, while also adding that we talk to the school board to get it done to?
Well, I think it's, it's two things that you're asking for. And, and Mr. Manager, you can add to this. I think it probably would be prudent to talk to the schools to make sure that we get their approval to do it. I don't see a problem with there being a consensus to move forward with it. But the first step would be to come, come forward with the schools and make sure we can do that on that property.
I think, I think.
Or we can do that already.
I think we can, we can do both, because once we talk to them, then we can move forward if council desires to do this. I just don't want to have to, to make it, you know, wait till the next meeting to, to bring this up. And if the school says no, then we just, we just won't do it. But at least we'll have the council consensus.
Did you, did I answer?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, if you're, if it is this board's, if this council's desire to move forward with this, you can go ahead and make that announcement or do whatever you need to do as far as the consensus is concerned, pending the discussion with the, the school board. Once we have that discussion with the school system, they will let us know whether or not we can move forward. We can then come back and let you know, hey, we're tempted to do it, but it just didn't work.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with that. So, Mayor, I would like to ask for consensus to move forward with the Churchland Park area to, to add the grills, the commercial picnic benches, and to redo their basketball goals at a total of between fourteen thousand five hundred to eighteen thousand.
We, we, we have a request for consensus to add what my colleague has just stated, and if we could get a show of hands to see who is all in agreement with that? A show of hands? Okay, very good. So that gives us the action to be able to move forward. Thank you, sir. Also, we have another speaker who.
I wasn't done yet.
Okay, go ahead, okay, okay.
A couple of more things. There was a speaker last meeting that came up about the summer raise funding source. And they mentioned that the state had, was the, was the funding source for our summer raise program, which, in which I brought to the table regarding four hundred children getting free summer camp. And I kind of, we, we, we got a present, well, we got a report back regarding this, but I wanted the, the city manager to report back on that, of who is the initial funding source for the summer raise program that the city is offering for four hundred free children. I wanted the, the public to hear that. Because it was some information that was said in the last meeting.
You have the floor, sir.
We've appropriated from the city budget the funding for one hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred dollars for that summer raise program. The only state and federal funding used for the summer, for the summer camps is through the summer feeding programs. That has nothing to do with the actual registration and, and running of the program itself. So the funding for that particular program is all city funding.
Okay, thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure we got that information out there, because I didn't, I didn't want that, that false information to linger around. A couple more things. As far as, when I'm driving on the interstate, I see a sign, and it's like this when you go to any other, the city, when you're driving down the interstate, you see food spots and entertainment spots. And when I'm driving around Victory, I see Rivers Casino as the entertainment spot, but I also see it as the, the food spot. And we have different food spots. I mean, because people's gonna go to the casino anyway. But we have other food spots, like Twisted Crab, or some of the other restaurants we have. Like, there's a Rivers Lounge in Victory, just, just a, a lot of different food options. And what I don't want us to do is miss out on opportunities for people to stop at our restaurants. I don't know what we can do, I don't know what the process is, but I'm asking, could we fix the interstate signs, instead of saying the casino adds every single thing, the entertainment, the food? Could we fix that to add some of the restaurants? Because I know when I'm, for example, when I'm going out of town, taking the, the kids that I coach on trips, one of the things that we do is we look for signs that say the different restaurants, so that we can stop at that restaurant and go. We don't have that in Portsmouth. So I wanted to see what we can do to put that on the signs on the interstate, so people can stop in Portsmouth to go to our restaurants and, and the different things that we have going on in Portsmouth.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Councilman Barnes, unfortunately, that's not under the city's previa. That is actually a DOT process, and they have to pay for it. It's not out of the goodness of their heart, they're putting it on. It's not out of the goodness of their heart they're putting those signs on there. That's advertisement, and they have to pay for the opportunity to be on those signs. So if those other restaurants want to participate, they have to actually pay the fees to be on there. That's why you have, that's why you don't have every restaurant that's available on there, because it's, but again, it's not, it's not actually something that we can do.
Okay. What, what can, what can the city do? Because one of the things that I think that we need to do is that we need to be more intentional of advertising Portsmouth businesses, so people can come here. What can the city do? Is there, is there possible, and, and I'm just throwing this out there, I'm sure to have to be discussing, could the, the city actually pay for something like that for our restaurants, so that we can get people to come? Because ultimately, it's an investment for the city of Portsmouth. We need people to come to Portsmouth. When you're driving on the interstate, a lot of people don't know from other cities that we do have a Twisted Crab. A lot of people go to Twisted Crab. A lot of people don't know that we have some of these local restaurants in that area or down the street. You have Tony's Seafood, this different place. And these were, when we got the casino, we said that it was going to help the restaurants around Portsmouth. But right now, it's really not helping the restaurants. And maybe that's because we're not advertising that we have these places here in Portsmouth, and we want, and we want people to stop there, because if they're stopping there, they might go check out a restaurant, they might see something else that they want to do. So my question is, is it possible that the city can put some funds into place where we can help with those advertising on the, on the interstate?
Go ahead. Manager Carter, you have the floor.
Yes, sir, that, you, we, we can absolutely do whatever this council decides to do, but I would really be careful of, of trying to start advertising businesses. That's just out of the purview of what we do. And then you got to determine which ones you're going to advertise and which ones you're not. So we, we really have to be careful as we try to move down that path. Now, if we want to work with our Business Development Office to do some other things that would just advertise the city, or our Tourism Office to advertise the city, that's more in line with what we as a municipality can do. But I think we're going to be really hard-pressed to pick a business and pay for a space on the sign form, or, or something of that nature. But we, we can do some other things, but that's just not one of the things that I would recommend that we do.
And I, and I think if I could, this is a very good conversation, but I, but I would ask that we, because we, we, we continue to go back and forth, I would ask that we use the time when we can get our one-on-ones and put the information together, so that we can be more intentional and thoughtful about how we can proceed.
That's fair. That's fair.
Okay.
My next situation, Sunset Thursdays, I know that starts this Thursday. I've been speaking with a lot of citizens when it was on the, basically on the water. A lot of citizens are talking about if we could actually move that back to the water instead of in Festival Park. A lot of people enjoyed it there, it was there for years, but it, it was moved last year. I want to propose to my council members if maybe we could see what, what we have, what we can do to move that back on the water on the High Street Landing, so that we can get the same vibe that we had the last few years. I think last year was the only year that it had moved to Festival Park. But like I said, there's a lot of citizens that have been talking about the differences in it, and it's not the same atmosphere that it once was. And we, I know we have a lot of people who actually go to that. I, I heard a lot of people talk about going and having fun there, and just the vibe that it brings on the water. So I would like to see what would be the feasibility of doing that, and see if we can actually, I know we can't do anything about Thursday, but in the future, for this year, move that back, and for the future, for the rest of the years that we currently have it.
Mr. Carter, do you want the floor now?
We take a look at what it will take to do that. I don't know the rationale for why, if, if it was there previously, that it moved, or I'm sure there was some reason behind it. So I have to do a little research before I can actually say yes or no to that. But we can take a look at it, and whatever that determination is, I make sure this board, this council is aware of what that determination would be.
All right, my last point. PRHA, there was a, it was a report back from them, and they said that they would like to come speak to council in a work session. Could we, could we get that on the agenda? Do I need, do I need to get a consensus for that?
No, no, we don't, we don't need a consensus for an agenda item.
Okay. I'll save my questions, or what I was going to say, to when they're in front of us.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, I know you wanted the floor, sir, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Two weeks ago, myself and a few of my colleagues were able to participate and attend the Third Annual Portsmouth Pride that was hosted by Communities of Change. It was a great event, full of people from all just different backs, excuse me, all different walks of life. It was vibrant celebration, full of love, diversity, and equality. And it was just great to be a part of this sense of positivity and the great sense of acceptance amongst people from not only Portsmouth, but from people all across the region. And so I just wanted to take my hat off to the organizers. As I mentioned, it was Communities of Change, and the many different sponsors who helped to bring that wonderful event to the city of Portsmouth, and all the vendors who also participated to make it such a great success. And so with the month of June being Pride Month, I just want to recognize all members of the LGBTQI plus A community, and making sure that everybody is welcomed in the city of Portsmouth regardless of sexual orientation, regardless of who you love. As the motto states, Virginia is for lovers. And so my hat goes off to everyone who helped to make that event such a huge success. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, in the follow-up package from the city manager, I'm sure you noticed the honorary street naming protocol, and it seems that the only thing preventing that is inaction from council at this point. I know it's been some time since that program was presented to us. So if, if everyone's okay with that, I would like for staff to re-present that program, and so we can move forward with it. I think, I think it, I think it's needed. I think we have a lot of individuals who are deserving of honorary street. I can think of a couple of former colleagues, Councilman Whitehurst, Mayor Holly, there, there are a lot of people. So if there's consensus, I would like to task the manager with re-presenting that, and so council hopefully can take some action, and we can move forward with that program.
Thank you, sir. And that, since that's an agenda item, we don't need a consensus for it. Manager Carter, are you okay? You, you ready to bring that back, so we can make and move forward with the decision on that, please?
Yes, sir. I talked with Dr. Russell about this and see what the timing will be, because I'm not sure if we need to go back over anything that's in it right now, but we'll, we'll check everything out, make sure it's ready, and then we'll bring it back to an agenda.
Yeah, so we can go ahead and get it on the agenda and get it done. Thank you, sir.
The, the other thing in the report back package, I did not see any information unless I've missed it, about the statues that were at Willet Hall, the, the arts statues that were at one time going to be moved to the Roundabout. A question has come up about the, the state of those, where they are, and if plans are going to proceed with the moving of them to the Roundabout. I know we had a developer that was going to contribute to the placement there. I think it was the Breeden Company, actually. But it'd be good, in fact, I'm requesting tonight that we get some feedback on that, and also the plans for moving them. If, if not to the Roundabout, where are they going to be placed? Because they, they, they're very attractive, plus they, they bit of history, they were at Willet Hall for a, a number of years. So we, we need to find a home for them, where the public can once again enjoy them, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. And I believe, Manager Carter, did you want to speak to that?
Nothing other than, I've heard some information about that, but I don't have some details that I'm ready to present to you now. So we'll, we'll pull together some information and bring that back to you.
Very good. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things that I have, and see in the report backs, that we have information about the turnover audit, but I want to know if we could get a timeline of when, where we are right now, if it started, when it's expected to be completed, and just where we are in the process with that. Next up, in visiting some civic leagues in the community, received some information. Yesterday, the West Park View community was concerned about the upkeep, and this might be city attorney with Oak Grove Cemetery. They mentioned that if you walk by, you can see caskets in some of them, and, and I know that they mentioned that that's a city-owned cemetery. And then, of course, getting back to our Lincoln Cemetery at Deep Creek, do we have a schedule of how those are being maintained and upkept? And at Oak Grove, they wanted to look at putting a flagpost in, because for Memorial Day, they had no way to really honor the veterans who are buried there. And some of the streets along that West Park Civic League and in that community, a lot of the persons who were memorialized and were generals or well-known military personnel, some of the streets in that community are named after some of the people buried in that Oak Grove Cemetery. So they take a lot of pride in that one there. My next question or ask is for, how do they put persons or communities that have dogs? And some communities have like their little dog bin where they have the trash bags, where if they're walking their dog, they can put the, is that something that city managed, specifically in my canvassing out in Westbury Community at Tally Drive? They wondered if they could have the dog bins or the little poles with the bags in them. I don't know who does that. I don't know if that's a city-owned issue, or if that would be. I see the president of the Westbury Civic League here as well, so just want to know how they go about getting those put up in their little circle there that's kind of like a park, and maybe even some benches for them there for the parents who are watching their children play out there. Okay, those are all my concerns.
Lydia, so you have the floor.
This is just a quick follow-up on Mr. Councilman Moody's request about the Willet Hall statutes, and I thought that was in a previous report back. But when the city manager, when, when you look into that, can you just see if we can get some history on that statute as well?
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other items submitted by council? Well, I have two items. Yes, yeah, yes, Madam City Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I don't want to step on Mr. Carter's toes. I will say that routinely, those doggy bag signs are private. Most entities are buying, purchasing those. I've never seen a contract for it come through our office. I'm looking over at my team, I don't see any head shaking, so I think those are private purchases. And also Parks and Rec is involved with the cemeteries, and so I will work with Mr. Carter to get you some information on that.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. And, and Vice Mayor, just so that this whole council is aware, we've gone through all the per, I mean contractual pieces for the turnover audit. They've already had the contract, they've already started their process, they've told me that it should be completed by the end of July.
Thank you both. So a couple of items that I have. First of all, June is Men's Health Month. Tomorrow, at the Renaissance, there will be a men's health fair from, I believe, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. All men certainly are encouraged to come. It's important, guys, that we get our PSAs and other things done, and our blood pressure checked, and our cholesterol, so that we can be healthy and we can be happy too. So I want to remind everyone that June is Men's Health Month, and take care of your health. The other thing I want to let the citizens know about is that today, I had the privilege of swearing in with, along with Madam Clerk, we swore in sixteen new, brand-new police officers in the city of Portsmouth. And so we are continuing to create an environment where we're bringing in new police officers to ensure that we have those folks who are here to take care of the needs of our community. Also, we have about ten more new trainees that will be attending the Police Academy, and they are due to graduate in December. So let's continue to encourage our police department, our chief of police and his staff, and city staff for continuing to bring officers here to our city. And if you should happen to see one of our new officers, please welcome them on board and, and congratulate them for their service to our city. With that said, we move on to the next item on our agenda, item 24-171, report on pending items. And Mr. Carter, do you have any pending items, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I would say is, we do have a packet in, inside your booklets, so if you will take a look at those, if there's anything missing that you need additional information on, please let us know. We've recorded the information that you guys have requested tonight, and we'll make sure that that's available and a report back to you for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Now we're moving on to the next item, which is 24-172, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum, and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And our first speaker tonight is Mr. Sherman Tyler. Tyler, if you will come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Sherman Tyler, Parker Avenue. I had a whole nother thing to talk about when I first came in. I was real happy and excited, but after hearing about the raise, I kind of got a little heavy laden, a little bit. You know, I just, I, I kind of feel like that, y-you know? Thirty years. Thirty years, these people haven't, haven't seen a raise, and we want to inch up to it. You gotta go straight to it, because they ain't got a raise in thirty years. What job you know that you worked on that didn't get a raise in thirty years? They ain't, they ain't common sense. I, I'm just saying, you know? Don't inch them up. You, you should start inching them up in the eighties. But because you never inched them up, you gotta give it to them big, because they have never got a raise in thirty years, you know? And that makes me think certain stuff, because it's not normal for to think that somebody should sit in a job for thirty years and not get a raise. It does not condescend, you know? And I don't want you to give me a little proportion, because you ain't even given me anything, and once again, thirty years, you know? So, you know, I'm glad that y'all voted on getting that raise. You deserve it. You know, one or two people in the audience, you know, don't speak for the whole entire Portsmouth. Portsmouth speaks on Election Day, you know? We speak on Elec-, we speak for those that we want in that seat right there. And, and one or two or three people don't get to come back there and whine and cry because you don't get your way. The people speak in November. Who we decide in November is going to be the next people to lead Portsmouth. We're going to speak in November. And when we speak in November, we have to accept those, that the majority rules. I'm sorry. It is how this thing is arranged. Four people on that dais get to decide pretty much what what we need to get done in the city. It is how it is. And I just believe, because the people in Portsmouth have already spoke, these people deserve a raise. We already spoke on the election, the last four years, who we wanted to represent us. We put those people in those seats. And we already done voted on who we wanted. So you should get paid. You should get the money. You deserve the money. No matter what, I may feel that it's not getting done. There's a lot of things that we gotta just work on, you know? And the first thing is the killing of our kids. You know, we talk about the new jail. We got all this kind of mess that we talk about. But it's the stuff that we gotta fix. But in the meantime, while we fixing it, pay these people what they worth. How can two walk together except we agree? How can you agree that a job been in effect for 30 years, and these people haven't got a raise? How can you even agree that that's right? You ain't human. If you agree that these people don't get a raise in 30 years, you're not human. You're just not. You know, so let's come together in one band of Christian love, working for the same common goal. Let's cut this, all this crop out that we got going on, you know, with the people and on the dais. We gotta work together. Because I think we all want the outcome to be the same. We want our city to run as a normal city, giving our youth a chance to become grown and give their parents grandbabies. And be allowed to be able to grow old with our kids. That's what we all want. But we gotta get on the same accord. And it's obvious, we're not on the same accord when you got people coming up here talking like that on a job that haven't increased the pay in 30 years, and you gonna find a way in that to make that right? You know, you know, I'm sorry. That don't make no sense. And that's disrespectful to me. And like I said, when you start dictating what you think, you're taking the power from the people who has the power. We have the power. We spoke. We want you there, because you're there, you know? And you should get paid. And I encourage every one of y'all to do what's right. Find it in your heart tonight to make your mind, I'm going to do what's right. And just do it. And care for the people, you know? And for everybody that's going up for election coming up. And when you campaign and you tell people what you're going to do, stick to that. Stick to what you say you're going to do to make this city better for the people, you know? And you gonna get flagged. Even when you do everything people want you to do, you gonna get a pushback, because people not all the same. We not all the same. You gonna get it. But I encourage you to keep going, every one of y'all. You know, continue on what y'all doing, and let's make Portsmouth better again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Valerie Godwin. Did I pronounce your last name correctly, ma'am?
No, it's Godwin.
Godwin, I'm sorry. You will come forward, state your name and address. You have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Valerie Godwin. I'm a resident of the city of Portsmouth. I want to, first of all, commend the council for the job that you're doing, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilman. You know, I'm sitting here and I've listened. And really, what I wanted to talk about, and he kind of touched on it, was the fact that even with all that we've got going on in the city of Portsmouth, and how we're trying to make Portsmouth better and bring more businesses and more people to our city, we fail to look at the fact that we still have a lot of violence in our city. We got our children that are killing children. We have people that are afraid to come outside because of the fact that they don't know what's going to happen to them. Now, we got this casino, and the casino is doing very well. You know, we got security around the casino and all of these things going on. But what about the security for just the average citizen of Portsmouth? You know, we talk about naming streets. You know what I'm saying? Well, on these new name streets, we might have some new bodies. So now we got a child that's being killed at the corner of Honorable Mayor Holly and Councilman Whitehurst Streets. You know, I have children that I have reared in this city. I have grandchildren that are coming up in this city. And I'd like to see my grandchildren make it to at least the age that I am. But at the rate that was going on with this city, with these people killing people, I think that some of my children may not get to have a future in this city. Now, we do a lot of things in this city. We come together on a lot of things. Can't we come together on protecting the citizens of the city? You know, we just had a couple of people killed, I mean, not killed, but harmed just this week in a section of Cavalier Mountain. I remember when I was coming up, Cavalier Mountain was a good section. But it don't look like too many sections of this city is being not affected by what's going on. Now, see, a book that I read, because we talking about killing the youth now, it says that our people perish without a lack of vision. Now, my vision is to see my grandchildren and their children come forth and be respectable, honorable members of the city of Portsmouth. I don't dislike this city. But what I dislike is what's going on in this city. Yeah, we get basketball courts. We get more places for the children to play in. But don't they need more than just basketball courts? Don't they need more than just a water park and a bench or a grill to sit on? How about they have some people to come in, like you Councilmen, come in and speak to these children, man? Allow them the opportunity to maybe get involved with the council, get involved with the city. If we have, what I suggest, and I don't know if y'all might like it or not, but how about if we put an ad hoc committee together? Where y'all come from different various areas of the city, that you can nominate someone from the area that you from to come together, and let's take a good look at what's going on with the city of Portsmouth. So far, I like some of the things that you've come up with. But how we going to invite people to a city that we don't really have a grip on balance? We put signs up to tell you where to eat, you know, where you can come and get a good meal. But how come we can't sit down and talk to the youth and tell them how to address their issues in a formidable manner? Because what we got is angry kids, man. And these angry kids are acting out. And then we've got a city where we got a lot of children running around with guns, killing each other. And I think that we could do better. I think we could do better as citizens. As citizens. You know, because I take that into account when I cast my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Godalde Yutrowski.
Mayor, Council, and other neighbors. So for this meeting and the one two weeks ago, there were discussions of our relationship with SIPSA and handling of trash and recyclables. I'd like to speak to the recyclable part of that. As a registered tree hugger, I was very much in favor of the cities getting involved with recycling. Over two decades ago, there was, in the city of Norfolk, a private company that worked with recycling as its business. And people brought their cardboard, glass, newspapers, aluminum cans to that location. And they did as much as they could, but the demand for their services far exceeded their capacity. And something happened with recycling quite a while ago, too. The idea was, we would take items that are reusable, the same cardboard, newspaper, glass, and aluminum cans, send them off to a processor, and they would be returned to us as new containers, new storage mediums, media, and the like. So instead of just casting things into the landfill or incinerating items, we'd be reusing material that could be reused and reclaimed. The problem is that this was a market-driven system. And the market for recycled goods did not ever develop to the level of robustness that was necessary to make this viable. And what happened afterwards was recycling became shipping those same items to China, where they filled landfills instead of being here. So they were out of sight, out of mind, but we weren't really doing what we had set out to do, which was reduce waste at the source by making use of materials that could have a second or third life. So as we go forward with recycling in the city of Portsmouth and in the region and in the country and hopefully in the world, our goal should be to go back to the original vision. My understanding is that aluminum is the one material that's most easily recycled. But you know, there's a hierarchy. Reduce, reuse, recycle. So we have to gear our thoughts to doing that. Recycling is third in the hierarchy. It's what you do when you haven't reduced the amount of waste, when you haven't been able to reuse it, then you recycle it. And that's where we need to look at as a world, because this world is the only one we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark.
Good evening again.
Good evening again.
Sitting too long. I'd like to address, please, the item that was deferred, the Innovation District for August. I'd like to submit some suggestions for you to possibly maybe review before you submit them in August. I attended all the meetings, and I found it very interesting and informative. And there were some wonderful ideas. But some things didn't quite fit to our city and some of the things that we hold near and dear, like our Memorial Day Parade. The plan is to take the four lanes of traffic on High Street in that corridor and very nicely turn them into two and put a lot of buffers and trees and such there. But I think that would be difficult with the parade to go through, and that may want to be looked at to see if that would affect a negative impact on the parade for future use, because it is a wonderful historical family event that we have. The next thing was about parking. And when the guy was explaining this, I thought it was a little bit amusing. But they didn't really have a very good grasp on the concept of parking. They wanted to use shared parking, which meant that the residential part and the business part would share the same parking lot, and that one wouldn't be there while the other one was. I don't know how that would work, and you might want to look at that again, because parking's always an issue. The other item that was interesting to me was the, let's see. Oh, the hubs. You've got the residential hub, the medical hub, and then the work hub. I hope that you look at the residential density hub and maybe give a little more space to the medical hub, because the medical hub would give us more day jobs. And day jobs are what restaurants and retail need to survive. So you may want to think about the mix of the residential and the medical and see if you can maybe adjust those so they be the best fit. Because by the time this actually happens, the dynamics may change in that area. So maybe make that suitable to their mix. I look forward to hearing the final project and how it turns out in August. I do want to add one thing about the open space ordinance. Ironically, I was actually on a committee some many years ago with Mary Heinrich in Virginia Beach. She was the originator of the open space ordinance. And that space, open space ordinance, was created so that farm families, like in Virginia Beach and Chesapeake, could maintain the farm, so that the taxes on the farm would not be so outlandish that they had to end up selling off acreage in order to support what was left in that family farm. That was the original intent. Guess what? They don't have any farms in Portsmouth. Otherwise, I'd be a soil and water director for it. But what it also means is, it is a buy for residential development. What that means is, it's buying the rights to develop that land so that it cannot be developed for any other purpose than open space. So there is a good part to it. And, but I don't know that, you know, it happens in some golf courses for that reading reasons, particularly like in Los Gaviotas in Chesapeake. They had another golf course down there, and somebody came in, bought it over, and then turned the last nine holes into townhouses. That probably would have never happened if there wasn't actual open space ordinance. So just a little tidbit of, you know, detail. I'm old. I've been around a long time. Thank you for listening. Good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Karen Bynum. Karen Bynum? Good evening, ma'am. You state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Karen Bynum. I reside in the city of Portsmouth. When I called late today, and the, I wasn't sure what the process was as far as speaking before council. I knew I had three things that I wanted to talk about. One was the Manial Street Sewerage Project. Another item was summer reading lists for our students. And the third one was recapturing Portsmouth parents. And let me talk about Manial Street. I grew up on Manial Street. Manial Street is located right off of Robin Avenue and has been that way for 63 years. That's my age. I remember the days that it rained and it flooded. And my mother, my mother and father, who raised four boys and four girls, can we go outside and get in the water? No. And you knew not to ask twice. So it floods, and it still floods on Manial Street. So now we're calling my youngest brother, who now resides in our residence, hey, you move your car off the street? Because you know it's raining, and you know it's going to flood. So we got used to that, which is sad. But now we have a sewage problem in Douglas Park. Douglas Park, that's where Manial Street is. Please, we'd like for the city to get that resolved, because winter is coming. And so what's going to happen to the orange generator that runs all night long with the royal blue pipe? What's going to happen during the winter if it freezes? That system in front of Manial Street where I live supports the entire Douglas Park. Douglas Park Elementary Schools and all of the residents. I'm sure that the city of Portsmouth does not want the entire Douglas Park area to be, as I can say, sewage backup in their houses. Who's going to provide for our hotels we got to rent? Who's going to pay our water bills now? How are you going to? How are you going to support the citizens of Douglas Park if something happens to that sewage? Next item, now we're talking about summer reading. I know I am not the only one who calls Portsmouth City Library, Main Library, and says, what's the summer reading list? Well, ma'am, we asked for it in April, we have not gotten it, and we have no funding. Last year, we didn't get funding, so we got a list of books. Well, if we got the list, there's no books to choose from, because they're not in the library. So I called again this year, and we still have not received funding or the list for summer reading. And now we're talking about recapture Portsmouth parents. The day of saying Portsmouth parents don't care is over. This is 2024. 2024. It's time to stop talking about Portsmouth parents don't care, because they do. They do care, just like I know one person, well, three people, that didn't give up on me, Jesus being one of, and my parents being another, don't give up on the parents in Portsmouth, because we do care. We have grandparents that care, we have great-grandparents that care. I heard one of the members say, I want to see my great-grandchildren survive. I got a 10-month-old great-grandson. I'm happy about that, I'm proud about that. And yeah, he may want to sit on this council one year, 20 years from now. So don't give up on the parents. And so what am I doing? Join the civic league? And so now I'm given to go to Douglas Park Elementary School and say, hey, who are the Walkers? Because I need to know who their parents are, so we can bring them to the PTA meetings, we can get the PTA meetings to join the civic leagues. And just like today, for the first time, I sat in on the broadband meeting, and I listened to what the technology we want to bring to Portsmouth. And of course, my background is technology for the federal government, so I'm listening to what we want to do at Portsmouth. But if we don't have students that can read, how are we going to do that? I sit home with my 10-year-old grandson, trying to help him with his science project. Well, where you get this paper from, my teacher? Now I got to go on the internet to find the page, because you can't even read the page that he brought home, so I can help him with his homework. So let's not give up on our students, and let's not give up on our parents. And please take care of Douglas Park and that sewage issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Barnes, sure you have the floor?
I have one question from Ms. Bynum. You're asking that the summer, the reading list be in the library? You were told that it should. Could we actually look into that? Yeah, yeah. And that's all I had. But she did bring up a point that I forgot that wasn't in our report back. Vice Mayor asked about the sewage issue at Cedar Field. That wasn't in our report back. Could we get that information pretty soon? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bynum, Ms. Bynum, could you come back, please? The city attorney wanted to have a... No, go ahead, ma'am. You can encourage from the dais.
I'm trying not to get involved. I heard that you said you had an IT background. We do have openings on the board of the PCBNA, so if you want to apply, please do so.
I can't, I can't apply. I still work for the federal government, so...
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. I just wondered.
Good. Well, Ms. Bynum, you may know somebody, though, that can.
Absolutely.
Okay, and you can refer them to our website, our city website, and they can go and fill out an application. They just need to designate what area they choose to work, and the application is generally self-explanatory. They can get it done right there.
Absolutely. So now that the mayor has given me a due out, I will definitely make sure I respond.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. Councilman Tillis, I know you had...
Oh, no.
Okay, you good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Our next speaker is Mia Phillips. Ms. Phillips, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You have five minutes, ma'am.
Hey, good evening. I'm Mia Phillips. I live in Portsmouth. And my issue or my concern is in reference to zoning. I just happen to be on the board, and they brought it to our attention that the lots that are 25 feet wide, they were, they were saying that the engineering department was having issues with how those lots drain. So I asked which particular lots. I couldn't get solid information. Someone had already given me the heads up that a particular lot had been kicked back, and they were told that they couldn't build a certain decent-sized house that would be marketable and that would be good for Portsmouth, and they had to build a really narrow house. So I said, let me go out there when it rains and let me find out what's going on. So I went out there when it was raining, and sure enough, the lot drained just fine. And I'm a contractor, so I know what to look for, and I know how to read a survey and what makes sense. So I called the surveyor to find out if that was really true. And he told me that it drained a foot and a half higher in the back than it did in the front. So I posed this when we were in the board meeting, and I asked them what was going on or who came up with this, that these lots are not draining. I couldn't get any solid information. So I reached out to our zoning department, I reached out to our, didn't get a call back. Called twice, didn't get a call back. Reached out to our city manager, so I could try to set up a meeting. I didn't get a call back either from that particular department. So I'm still waiting, and I don't know what's happening as far as with those lots. But what they're being told is that they don't have a consistent manner as to how they're handling these lots with these builders. And what happens is, there's a lot of little small, small lots that the builders are building on, helping these blighted communities, houses that are either, they need to be torn down, or they need something else done to them, or just a brand-new house built. So what happens is, it discourages builders, and they can go to other cities. And just like what Mr. Barnes was saying, we need to attract people to our city. When you discourage builders from building in our city, they will go somewhere else. They'll go to Newport News, they'll go to Hampton, they will take their money and they will go somewhere else. No one's going to keep them here. And if you give them a hard time and ride them and make it hard, and don't give them an explanation as to why they can't get things done, then they will take their stuff and pack it up and go somewhere else. And if I can't get any answers, and I'm on the board and I'm trying to find out, how are they going to get answers? My second issue is that, we were also told in that meeting, is that they were going to start, if there's a situation of common ownership with land. If you own a piece of land and it has a separate address, and you own another piece of land and it has a separate address, but it has common ownership, what they're saying is they're going to go back to a ordinance that was in, I think, 2020, something like that, where if you own both of those pieces of land, the same person, you can't sell it to anybody else. You have to combine those lands, those two pieces of parcel, and build one house. If you don't want to tear down your house and combine it and build another house, what's going to happen is Portsmouth is going to have a lot of parcels that we can't do anything with. And what's going to happen is people are going to leave trash, they're going to drop couches, and we're going to have to pick up those couches and find out what are we going to do with those, that land? And builders can't build on them. So you get stuck. You don't get any taxes for that land, you don't bring anybody else into the neighborhood, you don't bring anybody else into the city, nothing happens. And if I can't get an answer, and I'm on the board, and the contractors, they can't get an answer either, what's happening? Why won't anybody call me back and let me know what's going on? And why can't we move forward with these properties? And what their plan is, is to present to you all, so you all can vote to take it back to 2020, where you don't do anything with those lots, you're stuck. If it's not the same name, then you can't do anything with the lots. It doesn't make any sense. You're moving backwards. Portsmouth needs to bring people back to Portsmouth, bring people back to Portsmouth, bring people to Portsmouth. People that have left, bring them back. But you're not going to do it if you can't build. You're pushing people away. So I like, I propose having a meeting with the builders, the zoning department, the engineering departments. I haven't heard anything. It's not hard to set up a meeting. If I make time to stay in here for two hours, to listen to stuff, and I pay taxes, I have houses, I pay taxes, they can take the time to pick up the phone and set up a meeting so we can resolve this problem, so I don't have to come in front of you all and talk about it. It's not hard. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Sergio Neil. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Sergio Neil, 1420 Elm Avenue, here in the city of Portsmouth. I'm here tonight to talk about accountability, and a part of what the previous speaker just brought up dives right into accountability. A lot of times, people, you know, come up, you know, and for whatever it's worth, you know, they feel like they get a boost by certain council members or whatever, but, you know, and giving them accolades, but, you know, holding accountability is another side of that coin that a lot of us don't like to take a dive at or stare at, because we feel like, you know, some may be intimidated, some may feel like, you know, they're just scared for whatever reason, but I'm not, because, you know, I'm me. Let's just keep it real, I'm me. I refuse to be. So, you know, let's keep it honest. Furthermore, you know, it's funny, I'm with this new group, and you know, they have, there's an accountability series, you know, that has come out, and we've invited, you know, all elected members of the ballot, people running, you know, for positions, to come and, you know, be interviewed about, you know, their performance and what, you know, what measures they have achieved, you know, as an individual, you know, bringing it up to council, whatever the case might be, or school board, or whatever position they hold. And lo and behold, we had one that said, you know, they were coming, they were going to be on the show, they were going to do the show, and then it was a, you know, oh, we got to, you know, we had to go to a civic league meeting, I forgot the date. Somehow or another, the day of the interview, they forgot they were supposed to be at a civic league meeting. And then the host goes back and say, well, you know, we're going to postpone it and go again, and then it's been a mute, there's been no communication from that particular person, you know, and I'm not the one that, you know, I'm not going to waste my time, you know, naming who it is, because it's pointless to me, I really don't care, you know. I already knew what time was going to be with that anyway. But nevertheless, you know, any time that, you know, you see, you get an invite, the host of the show is Conrad Schinvestor, he's been doing this chess show for a while, and I, you know, I just recently became part of it, please accept the invite. And if you can't just say, you know, you know, we can't do it for whatever reason, and I know I'm for one to say, you know, that's fine, you know, that's, and I get it, because most of you all have full-time jobs outside of being council people, and I know, you know, I know how it is when you have to work and try to, you know, all your business owners on top of that, so, you know, I know how it is, so that schedule gets tight, and I definitely understand that. So, you know, just being accountable of time and definitely embracing it, because guess what? We might not be the group, we're not going and tacking and saying, you know, oh, this person sucks, or this person is great. We just want the citizens to know that, you know, we are holding the individuals accountable and just really giving them a unscripted view of what our elected and appointed body is about, you know. But since I have a little bit of time, I want to say this, and it's really funny. We bring up issues like Elizabeth Manor Golf Course, Sugar Hill, whatever the case might be. You wonder, when did they really start becoming an issue? Especially if somebody's been on this ballot for so long, and I can tell you one thing, Sugar Hill has looked like that, like it does for a long time. I used to live in Shea Terrace. I used to play back there when I was a kid. I'm 36 years old. I lived in Shea Terrace when I was about 10. If you go drive back there to Sugar Hill, it's been looking like that for a long time. I'm trying to figure out, because you have people that have been on council for a long time, and these issues that have never been addressed, and all of a sudden, we're in an election year, and lord behold, the river's on fire, everybody's running and screaming crazy. So why haven't we addressed these issues before? Because we can't wait, always wait in the election cycle and say, oh my God, we need to do something about this. It should have been there, long time ago. You know, free summer camp should have stayed there long time ago. You know, I get it. You know, everybody want a piece of the pie when it comes to election season, but let's, people, let's be real. You know, some people will give you crumbs and think, you know, think they fill your belly, but why not, let's go for the whole loaf of bread? You know, let's not, you know, take these little bits and pieces and say, oh, they're such, doing such a great job, when we know that's just foolishness and that's not true. We get it, you know, but I'm not, you can't pull the wool over my eyes. I was born that night, not last night. I do my research, and I encourage every other citizen of this city to do the same research before you cast your ballot on November the 5th, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Dr. William Dotson.
Hi, Bill Dotson, Box 3269 Portsmouth. I heard a phrase tonight that I have to discuss. The phrase went, Elizabeth Manor has not paid their taxes. So I decided to investigate that, and I went to the assessor's office, who told me, yes, Elizabeth Manor has paid all the taxes they have been billed. But why don't you check with the revenue office? So I went to the revenue office, and they said, yes, Elizabeth Manor has paid all the taxes they have been billed. So the question comes up is, why are we harping on Elizabeth Manor, who has paid all the taxes they have been billed? The implication here is in the wording, and it is trying to imply fault with Elizabeth Manor. Now Elizabeth Manor is one of our businesses. Why would we default and criticize or demean one of our businesses that we want to succeed? There are three taxable items in that, that are being paid there, and we're only having an objection to one of them, which is the green space. No discussion has been brought up on the other two items that are being fully taxed at their full value. There's been no exemptions applied for. The fault is in how the wording is going on there. Elizabeth Manor has not paid their taxes. I think the question or the statement might better be reworded, because I've been to some city, not city council, civic league meetings where people have asked me, why isn't Elizabeth Manor paying their taxes? Now I have to wonder, where is this question coming from? Because if it's coming from this council, that's one thing, there's no liability. But if it's coming from a council person who is saying these things outside of the council business, that's a liability for us as a city, for which we might be sued for. It also is an embarrassment to our city to have someone present that information in a manner that might be called a lie. Let me emphasize that again. That might be called an outright lie, to imply that somebody had fault when they did not. Elizabeth Manor has paid all the taxes they have been billed. Let me reword that. Let me rephrase that. Let me restate that, I'm sorry. Elizabeth Manor has paid all the taxes they have been billed. The fault is not with them. And to bring that up further divides us in the way it's been brought up between the races in the city, because the way it's been brought up is to divide the white against the black, when it is a time we should be trying to unify ourselves and not divide us. Why would someone want to divide us like that? Let's talk about what's happened over there at Elizabeth Manor. When it was first formed, it was a white-based private club. As times changed and more people got into golf, they realized they needed to admit black members. Black members joined. The club then was about to default on all their loans, their property and everything that they owned, and was bought out by a new owner. That new owner now has no qualms about anybody that wants to be playing golf there. He says, you have the money? Come play. It's an open club. Why are we not celebrating the unification that this club has brought to this city? The face that it has changed over there? Why are we harping on something in the past that was, if we're going to criticize, the city's fault? Why are we phrasing it, Elizabeth Manor has not paid their taxes? Why are we not saying, what went wrong with the city? It's very much racist the way it's being presented, and we don't need that in the city of Portsmouth now. We do not need more racism. Please, 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 let's regulate this among the city council members. Let's come up with something that says, let's get together as races and do things together, just as Elizabeth Manor has done. Why can't we do that as a city?
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Todd Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Todd Taylor, 318 North Street. I was born in the city of Portsmouth, and then my parents moved us out to West Branch section of Chesapeake, and that's where I was raised. 2020, I made the choice to move back to the city of Portsmouth. And I'll let you know that as a resident of Portsmouth, it's a 24/7 job as well. Anywhere I go, I hear about the city of Portsmouth and the actions of the city of Portsmouth, the city council, so I can empathize with you that, yes, it is a 24/7 job, and I'd like for y'all to understand that and keep that in mind as well. Secondly, the free summer camp program, we need to look at that the way Habitat for Humane... We need to look at that the way Habitat for Humanity looks at things, with a little bit of sweat equity. Can we take some of those summer camp programs and teach people how to be constructive citizens and build basketball courts, build picnic tables to help enhance the areas? So that way they have a little bit of sweat equity in it, and then from there, they might wanna take care of it a little bit more, have an invested portion of what they do in that particular program. Finally, I'd like to find out a little bit more about the parking garage, which used to sit between King Street and County Street. I've been a lifelong member of First Presbyterian Church. We're a downtown church, very limited parking. What little bit of parking that we did have for some of our elderly members to be able to park close to the church is now gone. It's been fenced in for several months now with no activity, and I would just like to know where that's headed so I can report back to my congregation. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
I was just curious, the summer program and the sweat equity issue, I don't wanna misstate... Are you Reverend, did I hear you say you're Reverend, you're a minister? Okay, I didn't wanna call you out of your name. The sweat equity, I'm just curious, are we going to hold that standard to all of the organizations that we decide to fund? I never heard that come up before until you're talking about funding low-income children. I don't hear that same reciprocal sweat equity issue raised for other children. So don't talk to me from the audience. You can come to the podium if you want to comment.
Sir, you could come and stand at the podium, but here's what I would ask. I would ask that you finish your comment, and if you have a question for the gentleman, perhaps you could pose the question.
Yeah, I haven't heard the sweat equity issue come up for other children of other socioeconomic status. And I just find it interesting that that would be raised in that context. I don't have any questions, I'm just making a comment.
Well, I'd like to comment on your comment. I worked all through high school, all through college to help pay part of my college education. So to me, that was sweat equity in that, and I value that very much. I worked hard while I was in college and made great grades because of that. So I just think if people have an investment in what's being given to them, they're gonna look at it totally different and might come out on the positive side of things in the end. Might give them a skill that they might not have had, just going out there and taking advantage of what's been presented and given to them. That's my only comment.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tracy Borman. Okay, okay, very good. Our next speaker then is Victor Cox.
Victor Cox, 4201 Pine Ridge Court. July 1st, 2019, I got a phone call. This is about your police department. I got a phone call 2:18 in the morning. I was told over the phone by Detective Thomas that my son was killed. Over the phone, he denies it. I was going to my son's house. He said, "No, stay there." So during this whole process, my son got shot in the head, exit here, and Thomas told my brother and his wife and the girl, my girl, that my son died in the bedroom. I went over there with my brother the next day, 29-years Nashville Police Department, 16-years SWAT commander. We opened the front door, there's an eight-by-eight section, a hardwood floor missing, all the way down to wall, the subfloor is missing, and this whole wall was painted. Paint was on the ground under the house. So four hours later, the police were gone. There was said to be one person in the house with my son, his roommate, that was my son's house, the roommate, Ryan Phelps. We got three witnesses that place, his brother Trey Phelps, who told me later, all drunk and sloppy, that "I'll kill you too, MF'er." He told it right to my face, and we knew it all along anyways. Those people saw him on the back porch that night, and the Portsmouth Police Department did just zero investigation, none. They did not talk to neighbors, they did not check the trash cans, they didn't check the vehicle's license plates in the driveway, they did nothing. That lady behind my son said, three detectives, they stood in that kitchen for two hours just standing there talking, not walking around checking stuff. So then, four months later, I couldn't take it, remember I had a meeting with McDaniels. In that meeting, I had to ask McDaniels about Trey Phelps, who I know killed my son. I asked him simple, what about the $50 worth of pizza bought an hour before my son died? What, two people ate $50 worth of pizza and all three boxes was in the trash can? We found that. We found a receipt when it was bought. We found everything. And all these questions, they never found a bullet in an enclosed room. McDaniels told me in that meeting, I asked him, "Where was Trey Phelps?" He followed it around, and after a second, I said, "Well, what about..." And he slams his fist on the table and told me, "Shut the F up." Two detectives come in, said, "What are you doing? You can't talk to him like that." So as I was leaving that room, this is four months after my son died, when I was leaving that room, opened the door, he goes, "By the way..." The wall was, I didn't ask him about the wall being painted, "By the way, the wall was painted because there was pieces of your son all over it." Them words came out of detective, and I know you talking about the police and the academy and all this, and I know dignity, it comes up all the time. There's no dignity in anything that happened with the Portsmouth Police Department over the murder of my son. It's deemed suicide. The coroner, in less than a week, ruled it a suicide before they got a police report. I asked for the FOIA report, the case files and detective notes. I know a lot of police officers, I go to FOP parties all the time. I asked, "Where are they?" Five years later, almost, it's January, July 1st, I still do not have my case file. I still don't have it. I still don't have the notes. I've been speaking with somebody in Richmond. Richmond told me, "Come here, do this publicly." So it's a public, open to the public now. Your Portsmouth Police Department totally failed my beautiful son. 35-years-old, getting his life together, he's gone. There's nothing, absolutely no investigation, no bullet. I had to wait 17 months to get the police report over a report where the police were there for four hours over a headshot wound and no blood on the ceiling. My son died on the floor. That's easy, that's just common sense. Everybody knows it, and I'd like to know what y'all, how would y'all handle that? Would any of y'all accept anything I just said? That's what I thought. Portsmouth's got a big problem in the Portsmouth Police Department because there's a cover-up going on in the Portsmouth Police Department, and I know that.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Merle Rutledge. Mr. Rutledge, if you're here, you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. He's not here tonight, so that concludes our non-agenda speakers, and that ends our council meeting for this evening. Thank you all for attending. This meeting is adjourned.